Center Street, Provo, Utah. This meeting is being broadcast live on the web on the Provo City Council YouTube channel, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. Please be aware that the microphones in the room pick up the noise of paper and other rustling objects, as well as side conversations. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those seated at the council table may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. We'll begin with a roll call. Mr. Strachan.
Cliff Strachan.
Brian Jones.
Dave Back.
Gary Wooderton.
George Handley.
David Harley.
Kate Emmerich.
Bryce Mumford.
Dave Sewell.
George Stewart.
Lynn Parker.
Great. The opening prayer will be provided by Mr. David Walter.
Our eternal and loving Father and Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this day that we have to be here. We're grateful for our opportunities and our responsibilities as stewards in Thy kingdom. And we're grateful for the chance we have to be here to help plan for and work for the betterment of Provo. We pray, Father, that Thy Spirit might attend us to help us, to guide us in making the best possible choice. And we pray for Thy Spirit to watch over all of those employees this day who serve Thee by being out and about amongst the community. May they be protected and safe and return home to their loved ones. In the name of Thy Son, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Walter, do you want to just hang out there?
No. Thank you.
As I introduce the first item, which is a discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the chief executive officer to enter into a lease agreement with Blue Sky Development to allow them to utilize parking spaces for a pending mixed-use project at 105 East Center Street. And Mr. David Walter, our redevelopment agent's contractor, will be giving the presentation.
Thank you. So this is a proposed mixed-use development at the intersection of 100 East and Center Street. We've been working with McKay Christensen. Initially, it was red sky. He's changed it to blue sky, so...
Sounds a lot less ominous.
Well, you know, red sky at morning, at night, say... I think that's why he changed it.
It was in the wrong...
Could be. Could be. Okay, there we go. So he has been purchasing... Oh, wow. He's been purchasing the property, the former gas station, and he is developing it, like I said, mixed use. He's going to have commercial on the ground floor. Maybe it works for you. Ah, so here, this is his proposal. He has purchased the property. He has gone through planning commission and community development, and he's getting ready to start the process. He's going to have a ground floor that'll have commercial, which will be retail and office, primarily restaurant. He's been talking to Mr. Kevin Santiago about a couple of concepts to bring him into downtown Provo. And they don't have a mixture of Studio One, two-bedroom apartments. They are proposed to be market-rate apartments. He will park all the residential onsite, but he is requesting access to the agency's allotment of parking spaces in the Wells Fargo garage here in order to meet the parking for his commercial needs. As a quick background, the agency received an allotment of 204 parking spaces in the Wells Fargo's parking garage as a result of the assistance the redevelopment agencies provided in the construction of the Wells Fargo building and the garage. Previously, the agency has worked with 63 East to provide parking spaces for the residential units there. There are 55 spaces at 63. They're right in here. So there's a walkway to the building. Residents park here, walk to their building here. And then also, when the developer was going to do 80 East, which would have been located here, they were interested in bringing another 80 spaces, leasing in 80 spaces from us. That project was approved, well, believe me, say the lease was approved by the redevelopment agency, but the project never went forward. So those 80 spaces are kind of in a holding pattern. We have been told that Provo City Housing Authority has reached out to the developer and is interested in acquiring 80 East and will build the project there, but at this point, they don't know that they would use all the 80 spaces that would be available there. I think it's important to point out that there's been some other interest in the agency's 204 spaces, primarily from the owners of the Los Hermanos building. They are interested in rebuilding. They would like to keep a restaurant on the ground floor, the office space as it currently exists on the second floor, but add two additional stories of residential. And they are talking to us about the possibility of having spaces here in Wells Fargo. And then also, Mr. Brad Sears of R E M S has, in the past, had a proposal called University Towers that would wrap around here and be a 15-story office mixed-use structure again, but he would have some parking inside, but they would also need access to the agency space, some of the agency spaces in that building. Mr. Christensen? Let me see if I can get it. So here's, he's going to have about 7,200 square feet of ground floor retail. He's going to have some amenities for his residents as required under the code. He's looking to have restaurants on the ground floor, plus some office space, real estate So he thinks he's well-positioned here to take advantage of all the other activity that has happened in the downtown Provo area, thinks that's going to be good for him. And this is what he's proposing to look like. Keep in mind that these are a little older. He's gone through a couple of revisions since then, but this would be... This would be his ground floor space here, and then he would park all of the residential units interior to the project. He's going to have a parking structure that'll hold all the residents. The resolution before you today... Let me back up one more step here. So the agency received these 204 spaces when the Wells Fargo structure went through a bankruptcy hearing. There was a court-appointed receiver, Mr. Duncan Lambert of Coldwell Banker Real Estate. We have been trying to reach out to Mr. Lambert and his attorney, and we haven't had a chance to make contact with them yet. And so the resolution in the staff report is asking you to go ahead and approve the concept of signing the lease agreement and giving the chief executive officer of the redevelopment agency the authority to make some minor changes, provided they don't, you know, don't make substantive changes to the document or the deal plans. Our arrangement for the parking structure spaces expires in 2044.
At which point, who has ownership of it after 2044?
I think that goes, I think it goes back to the Wells Fargo ownership.
You said '44, right?
2044, yes, sir.
Perfect years.
That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
It seems like there's a number of developers that want to use our parking...
Yes.
...instead of building their own. Why don't they build their own? Because it's just so much less expensive. And who do you give the advantage to if there's two or three that want to first come first?
So far, that's, you know, that's been the case.
Okay. I mean, it's good to be able to use, to get paid for it, but I guess unless you have some other competing developments that you felt might be better, you utilize that parking that you take for scum.
So we don't have a clear proposal from the owners of the Los Hermanos property. They're interested. They would definitely like to do it. Mr. Sears of R E M S in the Knight Building, he has a, he had a project that was called University Towers, which was approved, I believe, in 2007 with the redevelopment agency. However, funding for that project came from the Central Business District project area, and that project area sunsetted, well, our ability to collect tax increment from that project area expired in 2015. Therefore, we did not have a funding source to assist Mr. Sears in the development of the project, and we terminated the agreement.
Tell me how many spaces were Blue Sky interested in?
They were interested in 55. Talking with community development, they figured they would need about 36.
How many spaces are they providing for the residents in town? Shouldn't they want to go...
So they have 54,000 square feet of parking that will be, as I said, interior to the project.
Here's a second box there.
Right here, 132, plus another 13 on the street. They're showing 13 on the street, but I think that's, I think they've been told since then that they couldn't count that, so it's 132 they're providing interior.
How many units of housing, how many residential units?
124. 124. Uh, 126.
126. Very over one unit.
Yeah. So initially, he was talking about on the ground floor that all of it would be restaurants, so that would put his count a little higher, but I mean, there've been some give and take on that in the community development.
So we got an email from Austin Taylor recommending that we allocate only the 36 to the code. What's your feeling on that? That seemed to make sense, given the demand from various parties for the spaces.
Yeah, I, no, I think that's entirely logical, given the interest from everybody, and if we were going to utilize it to its maximum extent, if we... The 36 spaces would leave us, you know, if you assume that 80 East, which had 80 units, if that, if you don't include those in the calculation, doing the 36 for Blue Sky would leave us a net of 33 spaces in the project, after you take out 63 East, 80 East, and Blue Sky. So that's still my...
So you're referring to the Wells Fargo?
Yes, yes.
The 204?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, on the 204, if you, 55 for 63 East, 80 for 80 East, 36 for Blue Sky would leave a balance of 33. Or if you did the 55 that he's requesting, that would be a balance of 14. So the 33 spaces would probably give you the option to help the Los Hermanos property owners in expanding their project. Because they would do, I'm just guessing, but they could probably get four to six units on the third and, proposed third and fourth levels of their building.
Does that leave anything to the northeast corner project?
Very little. Just it, I mean, it would depend exactly on how many spaces we would need for the Los Hermanos property, and I don't have an exact count on that. But it would leave anywhere between 0 and 15, I guess. Yes, sir.
I'm trying to understand what this would look like. Do you know, for the 55 stalls that are already used or rented by 63 East, what do those look like? A placard that says "Reserve Parking" or how does that...
Right now, they're not allocated out, except for some for Wells Fargo itself.
Okay.
So it's kind of on a first-time, first-serve basis.
And the other, whatever it is under or so right now, are open to the public?
Yeah.
So is it possible that someone in the public domain would park there that residents in 63 East can't?
I have not, I have not heard that that's an issue, so. The nice thing is, since it is residential, it kind of offsets the time for the office use, so we haven't had a whole lot of, I have not heard of any complaints. You may not remember, but we did a while back process an amendment where PEG purchased 63 East from Forge Development, and so those units were transferred over to PEG, and PEG has not reported any issues with having no parking for the residential people.
I have heard of an uptick of usage, which I think is generally a good thing because of our wayfinding signs. And so I think the public is more aware that there's currently free parking there. I imagine in the future, if it gets to be a problem, maybe within the rights to be assigned some stalls and to put up... Or are we simply just talking about, you know, we have parking minimums, they need to fulfill them, they can give us some money, and we'll deduct them from these public ones, we're not going to recommend it, and we'll just say, okay, you're good on parking?
Yeah, we haven't really charged, I think we're only charging $30 a month for the parking space.
For 63 East?
Yes.
Okay.
So for the, for the proposed Blue Sky, it's kind of a sliding scale to help him get started and help the restaurants get started. But we're not proposing to allocate, I mean, dedicate a space, simply because, you know, we're not really getting rents that would cover the cost of maintaining those spaces that way. If that makes sense, though, say it right.
But right now, the same stalls are being used by the public.
Yes.
And so it'll be less available to the public, but with it not being managed, doesn't necessarily look good?
No, I don't, at this point, we don't envision that any change is going to happen for the public, who drives up and wants to park there.
What's the current, it's 25 years now is the current request?
Yes.
And I imagine in 25 years, that could change very...
It could, so...
It might even change.
Yeah, so if you remember, when Mr. Earl got here, he is planning to be able to wrap his parking structure with additional leasable space, because in 25 years, he figures something will change. Either the public transit will be to the point where it'd be more advantageous to use that, or people will be using shared cars instead of shared parking. I don't believe that, you know, in our case, when we planned the Wells Fargo, that wasn't planned for, so in 25 years, we may be looking at a reuse for the parking structure.
But in the meantime, maybe in five years, it may be the public demand's on up sufficiently that the residents and restaurants say, well, we're paying for these spots, yet our customers can't find any parking there. And the residents say, well, we're paying $3 a month for these spots, and they're not available, so we may have to go to...
We may have to go to a managed system.
A managed system. So here's my discomfort with this. Okay, so we participated, we got these 204 for economic development, and so I fully support using them, maximizing their value, and encouraging economic development. So I think, I think there's alignment there on this. We were invited to go back to Lincoln, Nebraska as part of the Duncan study, and that was fascinating, or the Duncan facilities, but I think the thing that I learned and walked away from that experience that, you know, most fundamentally struck me, was how Lincoln, Nebraska treats downtown parking.
So I, no, I agree, and I think Lincoln, the New Lincoln's model is one that we should, could learn a lot from, where they have roughly seven parking structures in the downtown area, and your first two hours within the parking structure are free. If you choose to park on the street, you pay for that. And they have provided a variety of ways for you to do it. You can do it from your phone, you can do it from a credit card, you can do it from cash. They kind of have some similarities with us in the AR University Town as well. And so on Sundays, Saturdays rather, when the football team's playing a home game, they get slammed downtown.
So thank you for that, kind of sharing the system, how that runs, but what I was going to mention was that they view downtown parking as a city service. So they don't have minimums. When people build new stuff, they don't say, well, you have to have this much parking. They view downtown parking as a city service, that the city pays for, finances, manages, collects revenues from, and is, that's how they participate in their downtown. And part of our parking, strategic parking plan that we had, some of the options that we were given was to go towards a more managed, so rather than saying, okay, you're building this, you're building Blue Sky, sorry, yeah, Blue Sky, you need to provide this much parking, it would just be, okay, you build that, and I don't know if there's assessments or whatever, but then the city will take care of parking to make sure that's... And it seems like that's, we started taking some steps towards that. We're looking at our assets in the Provo Town Square Garage, in the Marriott Garage, in the Wells Fargo Garage. I'm just wondering if we're moving towards a more managed solution, which I think there's some value, so we can get the full usage of these spots by them not being reserved. I wonder if tying up 36 or 55 of these stalls for 25 years, I wonder if that's a step in the wrong direction, and I'd be interested, I don't know, there's a possibility of saying that you can lease them for the, you know, 25 years, but if we change systems so where you're not required to have parking, then we can take them back.
So the resolution in the staff report asks for the authority to sign an agreement once it's finalized, so we have not finalized it as yet, so we can certainly incorporate, I mean, if that is the direction of the council and the agency for, we can certainly incorporate that into the deal and future deals moving forward.
I think we have, we've had several opportunities to, people wanting this parking. We sign the deal and make it effective as of building in mid-time, because are we tying up and not allowing others to use it?
I think it would be certificate of occupancy. If, you know, I mean, we would make the parking available once there's a certificate of occupancy issued for one of the commercial or restaurant spaces.
But we're committing to it now.
Right.
And so how long are we tied up with that if it doesn't go? Because we've had a few other opportunities to do that, and people wanted that, and I just hate to say, okay, we'll give it to you now, and then have it three or four years down the road.
We did put in a sunset clause, that if he does not pull a certificate of occupancy for the office or restaurant space, that within, I don't know, five years, then that would be agreement with him. If that's, I mean, if that's the direction the council would be comfortable with?
They just hate to give it away and not get anything for it, when there's other people that would like to use it, maybe their project will go.
Right. I mean, I guess the question is, if we want this development on the block, we better provide parking routes. I mean, if we yank something like that, then all of a sudden, we have a problem on our hands that we don't want either. So it seems to me we just got to decide, this is what we want. I mean, I don't want to feel hand-tied, exactly, but if we don't like the development and we want something else, that's a different set of questions. But if this is the development we think we want, and this is the best offer we're going to get from them, it seems like we, it's in our interest to provide these spaces for them, that brings them in, this is a development that potentially brings a lot of benefit to downtown, and we get revenue from parking that I presume can be, you know, devoted to, I mean, does that just go straight into the general fund? Where does that money go?
Anyhow, it's not slated to go anywhere. You mean it could go into the downtown?
Yeah, I mean, if we just say we're going to reinvest that into downtown, and parking being one of the issues that we're continually worried about. I mean, I'm comfortable with the, what was the number? So Austin's email didn't actually specify the number, but 36 is...
36.
Yeah. If they're okay with that, that gives them enough breathing room, that gives us enough breathing room, that seems like a good compromise, and we get some revenue from it.
I believe it doesn't need to be conditional. We've seen a lot of projects, a lot of fanfare, and then it doesn't go anywhere, and if we just tied it up for the next five or 10 years and the property's out there, that'd be unfortunate. Or actually, if we signed it for whatever, you know, 25 years, and then it's just always tied up with that property.
Okay, I mean, we can have that, we would be happy to have that conversation. If I could ask the council, and maybe Mr. Jones, a quick question, this item, I believe, is also a notice for tonight's agenda, given, I mean, this is a little more of a substantive change than, than waiting for an approval from an outside entity. I don't know if that is something that we need to continue for tonight and bring it back, or...
But I think that's up to the council, as far as how comfortable they are with the current draft and what they want done. I mean, they could either, we could amend the resolution and approve it tonight with some instructions in the resolution about what the council wants changed in the draft before it gets executed, or if they want to actually see the changes, then it would wise to bring it back.
So for our conversation earlier, I think it feels like a lot of this is just checking the box. They have to provide so much parking, they don't want to do it onsite. You have these spaces that are just open to the public, being used now, we'll open to the public, and say, well, on paper, we'll lease them to you for a fairly small amount of being, it slides up to be something reasonable. But we're basically just like shutting it off and saying, well, you can count these, so now you don't have to provide that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a checkbox for us so much as for this financing. So there have been cases where financing entities want to say, you know, what are your parking requirements, particularly if you're going to be a restaurant? What, you know, how are we going to meet your parking? What's the requirement by the city? Show us how you're going to do that before you can get your financing. So it could be a checkbox, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a checkbox for us.
So...
Although, in this case, it probably serves for both.
For me, and I agree with Mr. Handley, that, you know, I think we've already, we're already quite a ways down the road with this development. I feel good about this development. I don't want this to be a barrier to them, but I also, we have seen projects stall, and I wouldn't, I would hate to see, you know, we give it to them for the 25 years at a fairly small rate, and this is where I'm not, I'm not even sure what I can do with them. I mean, at some point, this is managed, maybe they can then turn around and they're renting them, they're subleasing them to someone else for $60 a month, and, you know, so it's not really, you know, and that's still a gas station, so that kind of works for both roles. I would love to have this, so we're saying that, yes, we'll enter an agreement that these, these will satisfy your requirements, but at a later time, if we change how we manage parking downtown and how we require parking spaces downtown, then we're able to take those back, as long as we still, you know, guarantee that they meet their requirements, that we're not going to, we're not going to give them any new requirements or whatever, that kind of...
So as I, let me just recap so that I make sure I understand. So what I'm hearing that the council would like to see is, if we change our parking ratios or our parking requirements, then we have the ability to take the spaces back. And when I say change, that's either we eliminate the minimum requirement, or we go to a managed parking system. And then secondly, that there is a termination, an outside termination date, where if you don't pull a certificate of occupancy for a commercial space in the project within five years, then the parking arrangement would then also terminate. Is that, is that a good synopsis of what you're thinking at this point? Is that, is that a good synopsis of what you're thinking at this point?
If I was a bank, that first one would cause me to pause just a little bit. The second one, it wouldn't, because as a bank, I wouldn't be putting money into it until it was done. But the first one, they can pull it out, and how will that affect my...
My investment in you.
My investment in it, my security in this thing, because if they don't have parking, how will that do with, I'd be a little bit, take a little bit of pause on that first one. But the second one, I think it's important that we get.
There's some comments, I was going to say 36 instead of 55, I think that affected beating the whole council, if that obviously loaded too, or...
I agree with that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I thought that was, but, I mean, so, the two inclusions that I summarized a little bit, those are, that's the council, the direction the council would prefer to go to in this situation.
Can you restate the first one?
That if the city council in the future goes to either a managed parking system in the downtown area, or changes the parking minimum requirements for development within the downtown, that the agency would then have the right to renegotiate the parking arrangement with Blue Sky.
And then I think that's, that's an area to explore, you know, to see what is, what makes sense, what's reasonable.
See, that's, to renegotiate is different than pull.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, the concern about pulling it is what I was saying earlier, then you just, you've just created a problem.
Right.
You've allowed the structure to go forward, and then you're not providing parking for it, because you're, so I don't feel comfortable pulling it, threatening to pull it, or, you know, stressing the need to pull it, but renegotiate. I mean, it may be that, you know, over time, this is such a well situated place for walkability, that it seems to me that, you know, I don't have a completely clear sense of what kinds of, and it says luxury apartments, one to two bedrooms, so...
Some studio.
Studio, yeah, so, I mean, these are pretty comfortably within one car allowance, right, without needing to go. And of course, if that's essentially what you know going in, when you purchase one of these places, then that's kind of what, you're going downtown so that you can have access to the walkability and to the public transportation, so you don't need to be driving everywhere. So, I mean, I could see it getting to the point where they don't even need those extra spots, you know, not because they're not full, but because they just don't need them.
Okay. So, yeah, we can, we can go back and have that conversation. We would renegotiate the parking arrangement if we go to a managed system, or we change the parking minimum requirements in our zoning ordinance.
And just for your question earlier, I'm happy to do any signaling that we need to, or change meeting or whatever, to give, give them the bank or whatever, the confidence that, you know, we would like, we'll work with them to find a solution, we just don't know if what's before us is the ideal solution, but I don't know if anyone, I haven't heard any...
No, I, no.
...assistance, if we don't want this to work, if we don't want to assist them with the parking.
Regarding any money that's generated from those spots, the two and four?
Mm-hmm.
I would think it'd be smart to keep that money separate from anything else, and dedicated to the maintenance of parking structures downtown that seem to be falling apart faster than we can generate money.
Yes.
That would be a wise move.
Excellent. You're well over time, is there any final comments? Thank you, Mr. Walter.
So, is it coming back tonight, or do you want to continue this? That's, I guess, I don't know how quick you can get a response from them.
I don't know, we can try before tonight, I would, I mean, I think we've let Mr. Christensen know that we're interested in the project, and we'd like to see it move forward, but it's just, I'm not sure what kind of assurances he's going to need from us as this moves, when we're adding these things.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to have to continue this tonight anyway.
I think definitely it has to be continued, I can't hold on unless we have this, the agreement written with all the things that we feel comfortable with. I would move that we continue it.
Even what we were proposing, voting on tonight was, was not...
It's a draft.
Language in this draft, we're basically just saying, "We like this draft."
Right.
So, could you change that draft? And what good, what does that do to us? Yeah, why? That's a good question.
I don't know. Would want to reiterate why we were thinking...
Is it to give that a reassurance? Is that basically the issue?
He's getting ready to look for financing, I'm sure he's already found some, he's been talking to investors as well as, talking to equity as well as loan financing, and so I'm, part of this, I'm sure, is to give an assurance to those financiers that, "Hey, I have parking for this portion of my project."
I think he has assurances that things that we asked for are approved, that he's going to get it. I think the discussion here, the notes in this discussion, the minutes were indicating we're going to do this while it's easy, and maybe this exits.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And I would say, I mean, the resolution, you're right that the resolution tonight contemplated allowing changes, but it specifically said that those changes could not change the structure of the deals.
Right.
It was just minor wording changes, so these kind of changes would not be...
I think they fall outside then.
...by the resolution tonight. So, depending on how you feel and what you want public, how much public exposure and stuff you want, I mean, if you know now that you're not going to vote on it, you are not going to proceed tonight, you certainly could entertain a motion right now to just continue it now, not even open it up, not even read it into the meeting tonight.
Okay, so, Mr. Walter, what do you think? Is it worth having the conversation in the meantime, or...
I will try to get ahold of Mr. Christensen immediately after this, I don't know that he's available, but probably, yeah, he is planning to attend tonight.
And maybe worth even having a conversation with him tonight, whether or not...
Yeah, I would prefer that.
Hey? All right, so, okay.
So it's on the agenda, we'll talk with him, but it doesn't, I don't see how we can pass it through tonight, telling him to do it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
I would recommend that rather than council possibly negotiate it in front of everybody, you've indicated what your interests are, if you allow Mr. Walters to go back and meet with him, and then hopefully bring it back in two weeks.
I think we should wait, negotiate, maybe die as soon as we're all...
Okay, so is there a motion then to give to the committee on this item?
Do it again.
This is the second time, Mr. Van Buren, do you have a session on this motion? All in favor? And it's unanimous. All right, and right off the bat, we get to start putting catch-ups. So, item number two is a discussion regarding an update to Provo City Code Title 10, getting amendment to the sewer and water chapters of the title, this will be presented.
While he's coming up, can we introduce our intern?
Thank you.
Council members, this is David Rogers, he's our intern. Do you want to take 30 seconds and just introduce yourself?
So, my name's David Rogers, I'm originally from West Valley City, I just graduated from Southern Utah University, and I'm starting my MPA through SUU online, so I'll be working here and doing my MPA at Southern Utah University, but I'm really excited, I've always had an interest in local governments, I'm really, I'm excited to learn, I must have to work hard, and I'm really glad to be here in Provo, working with all of you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to be here. And thanks for introducing your welcoming, so I'd like to welcome the mayor and Mr. Paxton to the meeting, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Gary Calder, the Public Works Water Division Director, and I have this budgeted for 30 minutes, if you can cut that down to 25, we'd be grateful, like, you've got full 30 if you need it.
I will try to cut it down.
All right.
Okay, so, thanks for the opportunity to be in here, I want you to know, I did bring a tie today, I was out on the construction site today, so I took it off, and then as I was walking up the stairs, looking in the reflection, I'm like, "Oh, shoot," and I didn't want to be late, so I'm sorry. You know, never make excuses when you're up in front of people, but, you know. George Stewart's my hero, because he's not wearing a tie. I want you to know that we've been talking about parking, now we're going to talk about code, so I hope I can keep you awake. So, what we've done is, well, first of all, let me begin by saying, we are making changes to three of the codes in the Water Resources section, and we have worked with city staff, and I have Rebecca Andrews here, I have Skyder Thule here, I got Dave Torrisson and Dave Decker, okay, from the Water Resources, we've worked together, but we've also worked with our legal department, Brian Jones, one of them, Bob Tremblay, and Robert West, as far as trying to simplify our code, and if I can make it a really simple description of the code. The city code says what we can and cannot do. Next, we have our development standards, which helps tells us in an illustrative manner how to do what we can do, and then we have our standard drawings that are a visual description of how to build things, okay? And what we have tried to do is take our city code and simplify it, because in the past we have had information in each one of these sections, and it's been very confusing for staff as well as developers to try to understand, because there's been some competing information. So what we have done is tried to simplify that, and we've actually taken information out of these three sections and put a lot of that information into our development standards. Now, David Day was here in front of you, I'm not sure if in November or December, and we actually made changes, you approved already some of those changes that we took out of our city code and put into our development standards. And so what I have in front of you today is those changes, and so we have greatly, if I can figure out how to do this, which part do you want to do?
You just got it.
Oh, okay, what we're going to be talking about is, if you look in the code under Title 10, these are the three sections that we are going to be talking about, these three right here. There we go, okay, fancy. Yeah, those are the three that we're going to be talking about, and what Rebecca's going to hand out to you are copies of these two codes. Now, what's really amazing to me is, this, we're down to, in this paper you're getting, we're down to five and six pages as far as our code, okay, so it's very simple as far as what we're doing. The pre-treatment part of the code, you don't have a copy of, because this is like 75 pages, and it's a very long part of the code. The Water, Water Resources is a very heavily regulated department, okay? We have to deal with drinking water standards, okay? Here's the Water Service part of it. In the sewer, we have to deal with our collections as well as our treatment, like our treatment plan. Our pre-treatment program, this is where we deal with our businesses, our residents, as far as what is put into our system, this is the oils, the fats, the grease that get dumped into our sewer system. And so this one here is highly regulated by the Environmental Protection Agency, this is regulated by the Division of Water Quality, and this is by our drinking water. So these are three different divisions that we have, and so what you have in front of you is just those first two copies, and what we've done, if I can stress this again, we have tried to simplify our code, to make it very simple for everybody to understand. Then right here, I just got the front page, what you had last in November, if I can get this thing to move, is, and I got a copy of it, is our development guidelines, you've probably seen this, this is just the first page, every year we come before you with any changes, and this is just the front page, and here again, this here's about a 20-page document, but this is the narrative of what we can and cannot do. And so if I could just help you understand some of these things, like for example, in this document, not the code, is where we specify the situations, like, we always are getting asked, "Can we have temporary list stations?" Okay? That is in the development guidelines, not the code, okay? The private booster pumps that we get requests for to go up on the benches, that's in here. We've taken these things out and tried to make it into different areas to help us understand. So what you have in front of you is a simplification of our code to help us as we work with developers. And so, basically, that is all I have as far as to help you understand this, I'm not asking for a decision to be made today, we'll come back in a couple of weeks, the council to have you approve this, so if you have any questions, we'll be ready for even more questions at that time. But here again, we've gone over this with legal, and they have reviewed everything that we have done, we have taken things out, but a lot of the information that was in this, in the code, has just been transferred over into our development guidelines. So if you have any questions, I'll entertain them. I told you it's an exciting subject.
Okay, I'm just curious, the things you, is there a document that you used to redline or to take out, show what was taken out, or do you have that document?
The version that's in...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I think you got, I think you got a copy of that.
Yes, okay, it's in our, that's the one that...
That's, that's a very thick document, and I didn't want to confuse you, but you had a copy of that originally sent to you.
Okay, that's what I, that's what...
I will tell you this, one thing that, last fall, Dave Decker came to us, and we had our development guidelines, and he challenged our department to come up with a one-page checklist that we could share with staff, and we took all this information, and we were able to basically provide a one-page checklist that we could share with staff as well as with developers, as far as, I would say, 90% of the information, and we were able to consolidate that and put that into a one-page document, as far as the stuff that we thought was the most important, that would answer the most questions, and so we have tried our best to, in our simplification, trying to make this so that we understand it as a staff, and also help the developers as well as the residents that may be dealing with this as well.
So, 1002-160, wasting water, have we ever, what is the penalty for unlawfully wasting water? Have we ever applied it?
Since I've been here, we have not applied it, that I'm aware of, but we have it in there in case we need it, in my opinion, that's the purpose of that.
So...
But I don't know if we have ever taken it, Rebecca, do you have an answer for that?
So, we didn't change that section of the code, water conservation, you know, if you actually read that section, it's mostly focusing on wasting water for internal fixtures, it really doesn't talk so much about, like, outside watering, you're wasting it into the road, there are several things that we probably need to deal with as far as water conservation, we did not tackle those with these code changes, we're focusing more on the development issues with these code changes, so that is definitely something we need to work out in the future.
And Mr. Connect, to answer your question about what the penalty is, anytime the code says it is, it shall be unlawful, then by Title 1 of the city code, that means it's subject to prosecution as a class of misdemeanor.
So, I can tell the kids and the wife, whoever's taking that long shower, or...
Oh, man, you are guilty.
That was not the intent.
It was the internal fixtures, yeah.
You can do this, congratulations. I can understand that, and Brian will explain it to you.
Thank you.
It really is great, I mean, it's simple.
We've tried to, and hopefully soon, I don't know when, but we, Dave Decker's been the main push for this, but we will send the other divisions from the Public Works coming forward with their revisions as well, so we're the first ones, we're kind of the guinea pigs, if I could call ourselves that, but, or we're the easiest ones, I don't know, maybe, but we are, we are here trying to improve our overall standard that we present to the public.
So, reading through these, we've got the final version here, in our materials, we had the redline version, and I was able to read and kind of skim through 0.02 and 0.03 and see what were being, what was being changed and whatnot. When I got to 1004, and I'm not even, I'm not even certain...
What 1004 is?
Well, I wasn't, it was hard for me to see what had changed, in part, because it was, it looked like it was about 98% of this 50-page document, 98% of it was read being changed. changed, so.
1004, basically, we had a Section 1004, it was basically replaced by, if I could say, a template that came from the state, which came from the EPA, okay? We did take it, modify it according to our old 1004, submitted it back to the state, then they approved it, and that's what was sent back to us, okay? So here again, 1004 is what the regulation, and Skyder's heavily involved in this. This is the regulations we put on our businesses as far as what they can dump into our collection system, okay? Fats, oils, greases, as well as industrial waste, okay? And that's the regulation. This is the stuff that we have to end up treating down our treatment plant. And so that's why it's called the pre-treatment. So some of these businesses are required to treat that before it gets to our treatment plant, because of the increased cost or the contamination it does to our system as it reaches us.
Gary, along those lines, and we can talk about this offline after, but given the extensive nature of the changes, it might be easier for everyone to follow if we just repeal the current 1004 and enact a new one, instead of trying to redline what we have.
Okay, I'm, hey. Like I said, we're just, we're here to learn, but yes, we can make that. We'll have a resolution for you in a couple of weeks, and we'll fix that language as far as.
Rebecca sent me a draft, and I'll make that comment on it, just a suggestion that we can talk about.
Okay.
And so, and so, at the very least, in two weeks, when we're considering this for adoption, we will have a clean version that doesn't have redlines, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, we can provide that.
How about that? Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much, and thanks for helping us get back on time. Item number three is a discussion regarding repeal of Public City Code, Section 2, 6040, presented by me, Brian Jones, our Council Attorney.
This takes more than five minutes, it's not my fault.
It rarely is.
I'm just kidding. Elizabeth actually found this and suggested it, and going through the code somewhere else, she discovered a section of the code that's pretty outdated, it talks about the process for submitting items, code amendments to be reviewed by the council, and it talks about needing to be submitted seven days in advance and submitted to certain people. But we now have an online electronic workflow that kind of obviates and makes all of that redundant, so Elizabeth and I conferred, it's our suggestion, we just repeal that section and update the handbook to reflect the current process for submitting resolutions and ordinances for consideration.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you, Elizabeth, for finding this, bringing it to us. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you.
With that, we're on time again. All right, you set the new bar for everyone else.
All right. Item number four is a discussion regarding an appropriation for a temporary apparatus facility during relocation of Fire Station Number Two. This will be presented by Chief Jim Miguel, our Fire Department Chief.
Chair Harding, members of the city council, good afternoon. I'll try to help you with some of that time also. I got here and found out you guys were running a little bit behind, so I was able to go get my tie. But you're still our hero, George. We, we're here today to talk about the relocation of Fire Station Two. As you know, we are getting ready to relocate it to the 3900 block of Canyon Road. We, once we get it relocated, we will demolish the station and rebuild our new fire station. As we have started in this process, it's been a little more difficult than we had anticipated, not because of the personnel quarters, but because of the apparatus pay. The personnel quarters, we have, we have worked with Leighton Construction, and they do this all the time, with construction trailers and those kinds of things. And so they have been able to arrange the rental of living quarters for our firefighters on a 10-month basis, and then a month-to-month if we go longer than the 10 months. And so we are secure with the personnel quarters. The apparatus pay, on the other hand, has become a little bit more difficult. We, as, let me back up, one of the things that we have had a problem with in the Fire Department is apparatus storage. Even in building these two new facilities, our Station One and our Station Two, we've been very, apparatus storage within a fire station is extremely expensive. And we have a need out at, near Fleet, near the Public Works Building, we have a need to be able to store fire apparatus out there so that we can store some of the off-season stuff periodically, we can store our summer brush trucks during the wintertime, we also can bring apparatus to the shop and have it there, have it lined up basically to be worked on, and have a building that if they need to move it out to get something else into the city shop, they're able to move the apparatus into another building. So we have been talking about a structure out there of some sort that we could utilize for that. As we started working on this apparatus-based structure, we saw several different types of structures. We thought we had a fairly good plan with a company called Sprung. It was an expensive structure, but they offered a rental, and we were going to be set on potentially renting this, but the rental was, rental was about $70,000 to rent this for the period of time that we needed to rent it. In addition to renting it for that period of time, it was also necessary for the company, and I'm not speaking of this structure right here, I'm speaking of another type. It was $65,000 for them to come out and erect the structure, and then when we were done, it was $65,000 for them to come out and take down the structure. And the numbers took our breath away. And so we went looking for some options, and we found this option. What we have found is that this option here is from a company called Big Top Fabric Structures. And the difficulty with this, the difficulty with this company is they do not lease or rent their facilities, you have to buy the facilities. So we did some, we got a bid from them, and the, as I said, we had, in the first structure, it was $68,000 to rent, this one is $100,000 to purchase. That purchase, that purchase includes actually some additional things that didn't come with that, with that $60,000, like heaters and some vest fuel to hook us up to our fire station, those kinds of things. So with this $100,000 structure to own, as opposed to the $70,000 structure to rent, we also had a $65,000 construction price on the other structure, we have a $37,000 construction price on this new structure. So the, so the cost of this, to actually purchase it and to have it set up on the site, is just about $138,000. We are here, I am here to ask for a general fund allocation to actually purchase this building, and then when we are done with it, we own it. And we would take the building from the Fire Station Number Two site, we would, we would take it down, move it over to a piece of property, either on the Fleet property or very near the Fleet property, we would reconstruct it, that's what the $40,000 is, and we would have a, we would have the additional apparatus space that we desperately need per square foot, it's as cheap apparatus space as you can possibly find. The building is, the membrane structure is guaranteed, warranted for 15 years, the frame of it is warranted for 25 years. It has an R value, I think it's an R24 value, it's got an exterior lining, it's got an interior lining with insulation in the middle. And one of the reasons that we're here is because this has taken us by surprise, and I'll take responsibility for that. When we started looking into these structures, we were in the 30s or 40,000 range for some of these things. When we determined what we were going to have to do to set those 30 or 40,000 structures up, there was another 40 or 50,000 worth of infrastructure that had to go in in the form of concrete floor and stem walls and all of that other stuff, that this actually can be placed right on the pad that currently exists, and it's actually set in with anchors. They have these drill anchors, these four-foot drill anchors, that they actually put right into the ground there. And if you remember, this is the site that we currently have the spring cleanup bins that are on, so we've got big trucks constantly moving these huge trash bins on and off of this site, so we're confident that the soil, that the ground will take our, take the weight of our trucks. So we were faced with this, roughly the same expense for renting this as we were buying it, but they were going to charge us this significant amount to also take the structure down. The other reason that we are here, after we talked about this as a committee, is we felt like that this was a little bit outside of the scope of the bond to actually purchase this with bond money. What we were going to do was, this was never discussed with the bond, that we would actually purchase this, continue to own it, and use it for another use. And so after we talked, we felt like the right thing to do was to come, present this problem to the council, and ask for the funds that are available, or the funds to make this process possible. Now, in addition to this, the bond money is going to pay for the, about a little over $100,000 worth of work that has to be done on the site. We, I mentioned the living quarters are about $40,000, we need to bring sewer and water to the site, we need to bring electrical to the site, and we need to get all of this assembled. We also need to bring communications to the site so that we can dispatch our fire engines. There are just some infrastructure things that are going to, that are going to take this to a figure that we were kind of counting on. This, for several reasons, was outside what we thought we were going to be dealing with. And so we're here to, we're here to ask for a general fund appropriation. Now, we can, you know, for, as an option, the $40,000 is $40,000 that they will take upfront in a contract, they will come back when we're done, they will take the facility down, they will move it to our new facility, and they will put the, they'll move it to our new property, and they'll put the thing up. That's what that other $40,000 is for. We're well over a year away from there, so we could do this in two, in two swaps, we could do the 137,000, if we're, if we wanted to buy the structure, and we could put the $40,000 off until the next budget year. There are some opportunities, we anticipate that we will be, once again, we will be on the wildland circuit this summer, and we will have revenues from the wildland that we may be able to, with your approval, use for the $40,000 to relocate this facility. But the facility will serve us for a long time, and it's been a need, and it just seems silly to rent something, seems silly to rent something and pay the same amount of money we could pay and own it. Actually own it and be able to put it into service in another location. Yes?
So it's 65 to set up and take down, and 68 to rent, that came to like 198?
Yes.
So this is less?
Yes, this is less, this is, if you take all the costs involved, this is actually less. And we were a little stunned by that figure. We feel, yeah, we felt like it's a busy time for them, and they gave us this figure and said, if you, you know, it's one of those things where we've got plenty of work to do. And so this is the figure, because when we first talked to him, he told us we could count on about $10 a square foot, his bid was $28 a square foot. So again, we were, we were taken by surprise by this particular piece of the relocation, and felt it was the best option to come and discuss this with the council.
Any questions? Did we lose the site for spring and fall cleanup?
Yes. Not the, not the site, we, yeah, just a small piece of it, but.
That's just a convenient site.
Yes, yes, but it is a big site, there's a possibility that we could still do something, so.
So I think Mr. Connect can touch on this a little bit. So to me, you know, this appropriation doesn't allow us to buy it, because, actually, it costs more to rent. The appropriation is because the cost, I think it should have been in the bond, is substantially more than we estimated it would be, and so the cost of doing this would be substantially more than what we expected, both this aspect of it as well as the living quarters aspect and the infrastructure aspect. And so this appropriation is just because the now estimated costs are roughly $180,000 more than we originally estimated.
Yes, but as we discussed this as a committee, we also felt like using the bond money to purchase this building and to own it, that we needed to have that conversation. We felt like we needed to place that out in the line of day, that because there was nothing that said that we were going to buy this building and we were going to own it and we were going to take it, so we thought it would be best to have this conversation with you over that.
I think the jail for balance can handle this personally, so I would certainly be in favor of it.
How much did you have appropriated or anticipated to come out of the bond?
We, when we looked at all of the numbers, we actually had, when it came to the relocation costs, the, our previous architect built those in, and we were about $140,000.
So if you took 100 or so from the bond, you'd still effectively capture the rental portion of it and the rest from the general fund?
We, it is our intention to pay for the rest of this out of the bond, it would just be this facility, this structure, putting it up, taking it down, and moving it, that would be outside the bond.
Does the structure as you have it, you talked about adding power and everything else, is that, is that?
That's in that 100.
Is that set up with equipment inside, doors that come up and down, all that kind of stuff?
That's the, that's the electrical and all that. This, this number that you see here are our doors, our automatic openers, it is a fully self-contained apparatus bank, that we will then fully, fully self-contained be able to take it and put it up in another location. But this is, this is all, this is everything to do with the apparatus storage.
Council members, when I first came to Utah, I went to work for South Jordan City, and they had what we called the bubble. It was a huge structure like this, and for over 10 years, the city used a structure like this for its public works facility, including some offices and everything from fleet maintenance to parks and rec, to public works, to streets, everything else, operated on that building. Done right, it can be a very good and effective building for the city for a long, long time.
What is the estimated life of the exterior? It's some kind of white material?
Yeah, actually, we were going to go with a tan, tan material, because it shows the dirt, you know, as after a few years, starts to look a little dirty, we were going to go with more of a tan, but it is 15 years, it's warranted for 15 years, and then it can be reskinned. And the reskinning is, I think in this line item, the skinning was $12,000 for, so it stands to reason that we could have it reskinned for, in 15 years, for, you know, probably by then, maybe $20,000 or so, and have another, have another full useful life.
Can I just ask, the administration comfortable with this request?
Yeah, we've, as the chief knows, we've looked every which way to try to figure this out, all the way from double wides next to a barn to something around this area. And we think this is the most responsible, effective way to do it. And we have an asset when we get done, instead of just liquidating the asset at this conclusion. So it makes sense.
Any other questions? Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
And don't go anywhere.
Aye.
Item number five is a discussion regarding Fire Department budget requests.
So it was thought, Bryce, Bryce must have looked on his list and found out that I was missing from that, from that list. I didn't have an opportunity to come and talk to you about our supplemental requests. And so I'm here to talk to you about the two supplemental requests that we put in, and kind of where we are in the progress. and kind of where we are in the process. Is it me, Bryce? Oh, there we go. No? Move back. Point it that way. Okay? And then hit the left for backwards. Okay? It's supposed to work. Here. Keeps going backwards. Oh, no, no, we're good. We're good.
There's two buttons, I think.
I'm pressing the forward button, it's just got a delayed... Okay. All right. I apologize for that. So if you remember, two years ago, I came before you, and we had asked to begin a capital equipment fund. And that capital equipment fund was to take some of our major, our major expensive equipment and to look at its service life, divide that by its cost in a few years, and tell you what it was going to cost to replace all this equipment when it died, so that I would not be the chief standing up here, or there wouldn't be a chief standing up here, saying, "Our breathing apparatus system needs to be replaced, and we need four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we need five hundred thousand dollars." So we went through the items, and this is just an abbreviated list, but the items that we're talking about, the number of years that we anticipate they would last, and we did that with industry standards and with manufacturers, came up with the cost, and then we divided this, we added this together and divided it, we came, we came up with a figure of about a hundred and seven thousand dollars a year, that it would, if we wanted to put a hundred and seven thousand dollars a year away in a fire capital equipment fund, we would not have to come to you with a surprise that would be in somewhat, sometimes, the triple figures. So last year, in last year's budgets, we asked for a hundred and seven. We received forty of that, forty thousand of that funding, with a commitment that if we had budget savings, that additional money would be put from last year's budget savings into that to try to make it whole. That amount that went in there was forty-five thousand dollars for a grand total of eighty-five thousand of the hundred and seven we have in the bank. This year, that forty thousand dollars was an ongoing cost, so we received the forty thousand dollars, but again, did not receive the sixty-seven thousand dollars with the same discussion taking place, that if there are, if there are fire budget reserves at the end of the year, that that money could be placed in there to try to make that fund, again, as close to whole as possible. So that is where that, where that particular item rests. Any questions about that? What's the amount per year? Hundred and seven thousand dollars a year. Yeah, hundred and seven.
Chief, so it goes into the reserve, really going back to the general fund?
Correct. It goes into a, it goes into a capital fund, just like many of our other capital projects, our capital apparatus, those kinds of things.
Good idea.
Yeah. No, that was just what we just talked about. The second, the second request that we made was made on behalf of both the police and fire departments, and that was for an emergency communications manager. And the idea behind this would be that for many, many years, there has been a police lieutenant that has managed the dispatch center. That is not only expensive help, but that is help that, that is help that does not necessarily have the kind of background that somebody running the 911 center might have if we had a 911 professional. So we, Chief Ferguson and I discussed this with the mayor and with Wayne, and we wanted to remove, we know it was one of your goals to continue to staff up the police department. We thought we could remove that lieutenant and get a professional career 911 manager in there. It would be good, not only for the police department, but it would be very, very good for the center. And so we made that request. We, as you know, in the dispatch center, our full-time equivalents were twenty-seven. We have not been, we were at twenty-seven for about eight minutes, and we are, we bounced somewhere between twenty-two and twenty-five for the most part. We have been allowed to hire, actually to twenty-seven or even to twenty-eight. The time that we hired to twenty-eight, we actually lost three right away in the process. So we've never been really anywhere near that. So with this, we also think that this emergency communications manager will help with that. We think there'll be, there'll be just, we think that there could be a significant cultural change in our dispatch center, and given the fact that we're going to be building a new dispatch center, and there might be opportunities to discuss our dispatch center with other agencies, and we see this as being potentially a very, very good thing for our dispatch and maybe dispatch regionally within Utah Chem. So what we did was, we actually funded this out of an FTE and a floating, and basically kind of a floating FTE, so this really came as, this really came as a, I'd have to ask, I haven't actually had this conversation, but Mr. Parker, this came as kind of a no-cost, no-cost item to the center, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was kind of cost neutral on this, but we think that we've accomplished two very, very good things. One, getting that lieutenant back in the police department, and two, getting a professional 911 manager. As we, I just, this morning, received the job description that has been put together by our HR department. We'll be reviewing that and going through that with some, with some 911 professionals, and then we'll be going out for the recruitment just as soon as, just as soon as the budget is approved. We'll be flying this thing and moving forward with that recruitment to fill this position. Yes?
It's a couple of years ago, but I think we increased the dispatch FTE in part because one of the thoughts was we were having turnover, in part because our staff there were overworked. They were using, had to be, had to do a lot of overtime, had no, had limited training opportunities because there wasn't sufficient staff to cover the center while people were being trained. So I guess that is a little concerning to me that, of reducing that FTE, anyway, it's just something I think we should keep our eye on.
Charlie, we think that there is going to be some opportunity in this with, as I said, a professional dispatch manager. We see some discussions taking place. There's been some interest discussed. The cities around us that are not part of central dispatch know we're building a new dispatch center. So we've actually talked about what that could mean in bringing additional agencies in, and what that could mean for staffing, and there is actually even a potential that we might be able to reduce costs with something that is done. So one of the, one of the orders of business here will be to take a look at that, take a look at those relationships within the South County.
Does our building have the capacity, the space to do that? Are we able to expand?
It is being designed, it is being designed with that...
Is it compatible?
Yes, it's being designed with floor space to 2030. So, and with a lot of this thought in mind.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item six is a discussion regarding Provo City, sorry, Provo City citizens' budget. This will be presented by our own Hannah Solskell, policy, sorry, council policy analyst. And, taking away Hannah.
So I'm passing around copies of the citizens' budget, so you have that while I'm going through the slides. It was also uploaded, or also sent out to the council a couple of days ago. So the, this is my first time putting together the citizens' budget, and it was so much fun to get into how to make these numbers really accessible, because transparency is only as good as accessibility, right? So this is a real way to help the citizens engage with the budget on a much more meaningful level. Oh, briefly, I will just run through some of the basic numbers and the charts that you'll see in the handout as it's going around, and then we'll have more time for questions at the end, so keep that in mind. And then there will also be two hearings for the budget before it's adopted tonight, and then again on the 18th. So getting into revenues first, total revenues for the city were 283.7 million, with significant portions coming from the, from grants and... My copy is back in my office, that's totally fine. Oh, thank you very much. The significant proportion is coming from grants, especially with the airport, and also from utility services, which are 108.3 million of this total, 280 million. Significant portion was also going to general fund revenues, the 67.35 million. Getting a little bit deeper, in revenue summary, you can see taxes, total transfers in, and fees were the greatest contributors to revenue for the city. Total transfers in is just 11% from utility funds coming over to the general budget. Looking at this, we charted sales tax revenue, which is the blue line, and property tax revenue, which is the green line, to see how those compared against population, to see what we could gauge as far as trends. Property taxes stayed relatively level, even though we've had a lot of new developments and new homes coming in and increasing in value in homes, and the sales tax revenue has grown faster than our population has grown.
Do we know why that's the case?
There could be lots of factors that go into that. Bryce, do you have any better ideas, or are finance analysts? What it suggests to me, go ahead.
One of the deep reasons is the way that property tax works in the state, because as the value in real estate goes up, the rate goes down to compensate for it, so it's relatively less. So the only thing that you see in growth is growth, okay? So if you have new homes or new buildings that are built, that will show that the actual property tax itself, unless you do a property tax increase, stays flat.
Yeah, I was referring, well, I mean, I have, I have, I have problems with why that's the case. Like, that flat rate is, means we're losing money every year.
Yes.
Which really irritates me, but that's...
You're right.
But I'm wondering why the sales tax is going up faster than the population? Is that, do we have any idea why that's happening?
Well, there's a couple of things. When we get our sales tax, 50% of it is based on population, 50% is based on point-of-sale, okay? And so what happens is, Provo's about 120,000 population, you know, the state number, I don't know if it's 4 million or whatever it is, so each, what happens, they take our population, divide it by the total population for the state, and then take the total sales tax revenue for the state, take half of it, and then they allocate that based on our population. So as the state has areas that are bringing in additional sales tax, as their new projects come in, that revenue comes to the city based on that 50%, and then the other is just based on the actual cells that go on within the city of Provo. And so that 50% portion is based on population. Even though our population is staying, our growth is slow, the growth in the state as a whole is up higher, and so we benefit from that, so that's...
Are we getting more business here in the city from outsiders? I mean, is that, I mean, you're saying 50%, so it's hard, it's hard to know how much of this is like windfall from the state.
You take Lehigh, for example, okay? And you take the factory outlet there, and you take any areas in St. George, you know, up in Salt Lake, any of those projects that are new, that are generating a lot of sales tax, we're getting a piece of those projects because half of our sale tax is based on the state's total sales, spread based on population, okay? So that's the area where we're seeing most of our growth, because our growth in point-of-sale within the city...
Is pretty stable.
That's right, that's right. It's not going down, but it's more stable. Does that make sense?
Any more questions about this information here? We can always come back to all of this. So moving on to expenses, total expenses for the city were 288.74 million, with about 607, or 67.4 million expenses coming out of the general fund for basic operations. Those are, this slide was pasted incorrectly, and that is my fault, but on page two, you can see down on the bottom graph, it shows the 11 departments, along with transfers out, which is, just transfers to other departments for their operations, or other divisions, like emergency response. Police, Parks and Recreation, and Fire were the top three, had the top three highest budgets for this budget year moving forward. Do you have any questions about this graph before I move on?
I have a question, Helen.
Yes?
I didn't see that graph in the document, is it?
This graph here? Is on the bottom of page two.
The other one, go back one.
This one back here is on the top of page one.
Oh, okay, it's on one.
Yeah, it's actually under revenues. This was moved in incorrectly, as I was trying to update some of our graphs last minute. Capital projects is a budget of 111.66 million on those.
Hannah, I'm going to go back to that, John's question. I see the pie chart, but I don't see the bar graph.
Oh, you're right. The bar graph is on page one, the pie chart's on page two.
No, but that's the revenues. The other one with the...
That's what I'm saying, I pasted it incorrectly. That is revenues, the title is wrong on that slide.
But it said 280, and this is, the revenues for this is 283.
Yes, because it was pasted incorrectly. So we're moving to expenses. Ignore this slide, it's the right title, incorrect graph. This is, right title, oh, no, you're right, this is general fund expenses. This should be the pie chart, you're absolutely right.
That's, this bar graph is a representation of the pie chart.
We got some new information as we were updating the sales tax and population, that graph. We were asked to adjust that for inflation for 2019. So as we did that in our Excel document, it caused a small ripple with some changes in formulas in our others, so I was just updating that and did not put in this pie chart. But you can see the majority goes to enterprise funds, which I'm sure we're all familiar with, but function to bring goods and services to the public in a business sort of a way. And then the general fund was the next largest. And so then breaking down the general fund, we get these categories. I'm sorry for the confusion, that's on me.
That's good.
But that was a really good catch. Any questions about expenses before we move on? Capital projects, 111 million. The five most expensive are the airports, the general capital improvements, which cover a variety of things, and are covered in the five-year CIP document, including replacing the public safety building and the city center building. And then next is the wastewater upgrade with the new facility, and then for energy engineering. These are the top five actual most expensive projects, moving forward over the next few years. These are their budgets just for 2020. There's also the department reorganization, is a major focus for the budget in this upcoming year. We've got two new developments, community and neighborhood services, with 1.68 million, handling a lot of community development's former duties, and development services with 1.68, that's incorrect as well, 1.91 million, handling a lot of economic development, community development, redevelopment, with some of community development as well, and public works. And all of those will fall under the mayor's office. This chart was presented to you before by Wayne, when he was outlining the department changes. Looking at city debt, the city is in a healthy place. We've got a total of 156.15 million in bonded debt, coming from all of these sources listed here, the number one being the new city center and fire station bond. And the way that the state sets a limit for the city's debt is that they take the total assessed valuation of the city, and then they take 4% of that total valuation to set the maximum limit for debt that the city can have. We have totally, or we have currently used up about 25% of that current limit, so we're within what finance has said is a healthy margin. within what finance has said is a healthy margin. Looking at utility infrastructure, in 2016, there was a plan adopted for the next five years for some rate increases in water, wastewater sanitation, and stormwater utilities. This is the last year of that, so moving forward, rates will only be increased as expected for, to keep up with inflation, and also to just maintain the infrastructure. Yeah?
Other than wastewater.
Other than wastewater, which is the next slide. Looking at wastewater, Public Works has projected out the next two years of wastewater increases for the new treatment facility. This is what it's looking like, with a steep anticipated increase in the first year, but then going down after that, from 25% to 10%, 9% in the coming years. And this will likely not be all of it, this is just what they have projected so far. The police department has restructured to add a new administrative position, and also new patrol positions, as you've heard about with the seven new positions, or six new, one combined. In case you were wondering, there is this second here, I've had a couple of people ask why there was a second police administration. Kristen Kraft was an administrative sergeant, but that position has since been moved to patrol after this. So, in case you were wondering, that isn't a common question. And what questions do you have about this document? Or do you have any suggestions for how we can improve it for the public?
I think my only suggestion is, we know those are painful, and that's almost a $150 difference up here, so we may want to put the caveat a little bit clearer that the four, or three of these, there's probably just about inflation, but wastewater, we do say that later on, but when I was reading that and I get that, oh, it's only going to be going up by inflation, it's like, oh, except for that one, so that might be one small suggestion.
We're kind of listing those three, but as you're reading a list, they all start to run together, something waters, something else waters. So, we can make sure to make that a little clearer. Yeah, John?
I think this document's great. My recommendation, yes, we would be happy to, if it was finance, would be just to go through and review it.
Please do.
And make sure that we're in agreement, that it's consistent with the budget, just as a double check.
Absolutely.
But I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, and Kelsey was an integral part of figuring out a lot of this, so we'd love to have your final review.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or concerns?
I think it's okay to say, the current energy economy could be contributing to the growth of Maltese homes.
That is what Jimmy McKnight has worked out, that is the language that that department felt comfortable with. It is a potential contributor, just some of the nutrients and minerals in the affluent...
Controversial statement. I don't know why it's headed there.
I can talk with Jimmy and see if he feels comfortable we're moving on. Any other questions or concerns that you have?
Where's the transfer from the utility department shown in that?
Yes, on page one. It's not broken down, it's just in total transfers in, in that first table. I don't know if this is ever going to get there, it's the very first bar graph.
First bar graph, and so I'm looking at that, I really, our utility department is such a critical portion of our income, you know, I look at that, that first bar is taxes. Is that, when I see taxes, where do we, I don't consider necessarily our utility transfer as a...
It's the last set, where it says total transfers in.
So, this is kind of blocked here.
Total transfers in.
That's from utility funds.
So, that transfer in, transfer in, exactly, from utility.
So, the total transfer in includes all of our transfers in, from all the...
All utilities.
All the utilities, okay.
Not just energy, yeah.
It's significant that the general fund itself has only grown at approximately 4%. And that transfer in, yeah, I just, it's so critical to me, I'm so grateful that we do that, because if we didn't, our property taxes, it just...
If you were to show, if you were to break out taxes and show a separate property tax line, it's substantially smaller than total transfers in. So, what people normally think of as being a really key revenue source for us, isn't as important as utility transfers are. And again, as you suggested, it's what holds the property tax rate.
Yeah. I just, I don't know, and I know we send out the letter once a year that says, "This is what we're taking for transfers in." I hope people realize how important that is to our community, it's just, it'd be a killer if we didn't have that, so.
Every now and again...
I don't know how to emphasize that point.
Every now and again, we fight that battle with the legislature.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, we've prevailed so far, but, you know, in a community like ours, where there's such a substantial part of the asset base in this community is not taxable, it's really the best avenue for trying to address that specific concern.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Item seven, it is a discussion on a court amendment request to section 143885 sub 7, to clarify limitations on signage within the North University of River Bottoms Design Corridor. We will look to Mr. Aaron Ardmore, proceed planner for the presentation.
Okay. I think once we get that slid up, you'll see it's a very brief request. It's just clarifying what isn't, or is and what isn't committed through that section of the city. This came about because of recent history of signage in the corridor. If you have any questions on it, I'm ready to address those, or address them later in the next meeting.
Have to be careful about what I say on this one, I think, I don't know, Brian, you can help me with this, but we have had challenges with the signs on that corridor, and this will actually clarify, to help us get rid of those challenges on that corridor specifically. And it's a, yeah, I better quit there.
Well, and I would just throw in that language similar to this already exists in the other design corridors, and throughout our zoning laws throughout the city, right? So, it's just an omission that this is not currently present, so just clarifying, clarifying and cleaning up the code by adding this in where it should ought to be.
Well said, thank you.
So, the old language made it clear that you don't put them in the public right-of-way.
Right.
You still need that.
That's addressed in a different section of chapter 1438, city. Wish that was more broadly known, maybe we can stick it next to the information about how big the transfers are, because annoying to see them.
Keep them out of the right-of-way.
It does keep zoning, unfortunately, it does get them at certain times of year.
Yeah. As I said with the last time, any useful, kind of, questions or comments? All right, thank you very much, appreciate your efficiency on that. And, are we really, there? Wow, all right. So, the municipal council, governor and board of the redevelopment agency will now consider a motion to close the meeting. Mr. Jones, would you introduce this?
Yes, there are, to my knowledge, two items that have been submitted for discussion in closed session, one involving potential sale of property, the other involving potential litigation, and as both of those reasons are purposes are contemplated in the statute as being permitted for a closed session, it would be appropriate for a motion to close the meeting.
For motion, so may. And hearing, second, Mr. Connect, all in favor? Any opposed? That would be enough. So, we, yeah, now...